So we're gonna test everybody on those dance moves at the end of this session. So we know. Okay. So yeah, why don't we go ahead and share some answers with you?
All right. Hi, everyone. I am the All-City Council Health and Wellness Director, Jessica Ramos. Unfortunately, I will have to do the opening and I just tried to read, so I'm gonna read over a script, basically. But our A C C media director had a little audio connection, so I'm gonna be going through the opening. So A C C is all about the student engagement and shifting power so that students can be part of any decision-making bodies that decide what happens. At your schools, we seek to create a positive change and amplify student voice by serving as the bridge between adult decision-makers and the student body. We already have a diverse team of student leaders who represent or are elected by the masses of students at our schools. This is the agenda for today. We're gonna have three presenters who are from UCSF and Alameda County and myself. We're also gonna have a Q and A at the end. So our goal for the I G session or our whole Zoom is to update students on what's going on on COVID-19, increase communication between district government and agencies and students, increase student voice in decision-making, build relationships with students and adult allies. The guidelines will be, so make sure you're unmuted when not talking and unmute yourself when you are called on or wanting to talk. So as said again, we're gonna have a question and answer at the end. Again, please mute yourself if you can. Cook questions in the chat box or I G comments and hold and submit academic sessions on the website. So there will be a website should be on this chat, but there will be also a academic session on Thursday. So I'll pass it now to me again. I am the A C C Health and Wellness Director. We're gonna go ahead and start with our presenters. Our first presenter will be Lisa Erickson, who's from the Alameda County Public Health Department, nation's schools to share info and updates about the public health department. So Lisa, whenever you're ready, go ahead and start.
Okay, great. Hi, everybody. I'm waiting for the, oh, there we go. Okay. So as Jessica just said, my name is Lisa Erickson and I work with a public health department. And I am in charge of helping schools out through the COVID-19 pandemic. So basically, whatever schools have questions about the guidance that public health puts out, I'm the person that responds to those questions and helps the schools develop their plans and kind of think about what they need to do. And the role of the public health department is that we are producing a lot of documents and a lot of information for schools and preschools, childcare providers, so that they are informed, so that they know how to, you know, serve their families the same way and can make, really so that they can plan, so they can determine if they're closed or they're open. Someone's not on mute. That's okay. So, and I also wanted to give you a case update and just to let you know that you're able to find these cases on the Alameda County Public Health Department website and it gets posted every day at 12:00 P. M. So you can always go back on every day and look at those cases yourself. So today, as of 12:00 P. M., there's 124 positive cases, two deaths. And this, wanted to mention that this excludes the city of Berkeley, because the city of Berkeley has their own public health department. Great. So you wanna, I can't change the slides, can I? Okay, there we go. Also, I wanted, because of this pandemic, you're hearing a lot about public health. Everyone's talking about the local public health department. So I thought before we got into what we're doing, maybe just talking a little bit about what is public health. So public health is a little different than just kind of going to your doctor or individual help. Public health works, looks more at groups of people and communities. So it's really focusing on preventing infectious disease, promoting healthy lifestyles, and also protecting communities. An example would be, you know, making sure that your water is safe, also disaster preparedness. So this is what the public health department does. And in the next slide, you can go ahead and change it. This just gives you some real concrete examples of the kinds of things that your local health department does. So when there's an earthquake, the public health department will work with different partners in the community to make sure that there's a really good coordinated disaster response. We do food inspections. And in this case, we're doing the disease prevention. So the local health department is working with schools, oh, uh-oh, there we go, okay. Sorry, my screen's not blank. We're working with schools and churches and hospitals and the fire departments around how to respond to this COVID-19 outbreak. So that requires a lot of coordination. We have a whole team of people that are working in downtown Oakland, kind of like a big task force to work on responding to this situation. All right, the next slide. Yeah, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of the common phrases that a lot of you are probably hearing in the media and on Instagram, social media. And one of them is social distancing. And basically, what this means is that this is a public health practice to prevent sick people coming in contact with healthy people. So it's trying to reduce the opportunities for the disease spreading. And as you can see in this chart, if you have no social distancing, you're gonna have a lot more cases, right? That person gets exposed to people that are healthy out in the community and then the cases just multiply. That continues to multiply and multiply. Whereas if you're using social distancing, which is in the bottom row here, you have fewer cases. So that one case maybe only spreads it to four cases. And so, and the more, and that's only the 33% of social distancing, but as that number grows, as people continue to stay home more and use these social distancing practices, you're gonna have even more, you know, even fewer and fewer cases. And the kinds of things that you're probably hearing about is this six feet apart, right? Staying six feet apart. Or arms length, you hear lots of different things, but the six feet apart is what everyone needs to be doing for social distancing. Some of the other things that people are doing are canceling large events, like rock concerts have been getting canceled. Even weddings and sometimes in some cases funerals have also been getting canceled because of the social distancing. And also staying in small groups, so groups of like 10 to 12. I think 10 is what the federal government is saying around social distancing. That all of these measures are gonna help us reduce the cases from that kind of exponential, which means like growth upon growth over the course of many weeks. So that's social distancing. And there's a few other terms that I want to also define for you. One of those is isolation. There's three. There's isolation, quarantine, and shelter in place, which I'm sure you've probably heard of these terms as well. So isolation means when you have ill people and it's when the person that is not well is ill, needs to stay within their home and isolate themselves. So that means the person is sick with a communicable disease, which means a disease that can spread. So that person needs to isolate. Quarantine is a little different. Quarantine means when people could be healthy or maybe they don't know if they're sick or not, but they don't necessarily have symptoms, but they also need to stay home. Because maybe they've been in contact with people who were sick or maybe they've traveled to countries where countries are concerned with lots of outbreak of a particular disease. So those people would quarantine. And then lastly, shelter in place, which is what we're all in right now, is when everybody just needs to stay home. So as you know, the county of Alameda, along with six other counties, issued an order on March 16th to shelter in place. And that means everybody has to stay home, but you're allowed to go out for essential activities. And some of these essential activities would be like grocery shopping, going to the doctor, things like that. But not, but really they don't want you kind of out being social or out doing things unless it is truly essential. You're also allowed to go out and roll off your dog and maybe go for a hike or take a walk. But as you might have heard in the media just this past weekend, a lot of people were going out to beaches and parks. And unfortunately, they, the parks got kind of overcrowded and overloaded with people and they weren't allowed, they couldn't be six feet apart. So this was a huge concern. So the governor actually closed the parks, the state parks, because people just couldn't, they were, they were crammed, right? You couldn't keep that six feet apart. So yeah. Right now, we're all issued it and now the governor on March 19th told all of California needs to be sheltered in place. So those are kind of the, some of the terms and feel free to ask me questions about those two at the end of the session. Okay, next slide. All right, and I'm sure you guys have also maybe heard this. It's called flattening the curve. And I like this graphic because it kind of shows what happens if you don't do social distancing, right? So if you're not doing all those things that I just talked about, you'll see a spike and that's when the curve is kind of up here. That's the spike. So that's what happens when you aren't doing the social distancing. And what happens if you're not doing the social distancing is you can overburden the healthcare system and you also put vulnerable people at risk. So that's what we're trying to avoid. So places like Highlands, Kaiser Medical Center, Children's Hospital, they don't have enough beds. So if we're not, if we're all getting sick, that overloads the hospital system and then they're not able to care for everybody, right? If those hospital systems are, if the hospitals are overloaded. So we really want to try to do this social distancing to make sure that what we call flattening the curve. That means that we'll still see some cases, but it won't happen in a spike like that so that our hospitals can handle the cases, they can take care of you. So we're all trying as a community to do these things, even if we are healthy and young and maybe we're not vulnerable. It's important for us to all do these things, help protect our vulnerable population. And one example of a vulnerable population is maybe your grandparents, like maybe you live with your grandparents, maybe? So if you don't want to be out socializing and bringing germs and, you know, potentially socializing with six people that may not even know the and then put your grandparents at risk because the elderly are more at risk for coronavirus. All right. Next slide. Is it working?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. So this is also, this is an example of what happened. This is a long time ago. But what public health professionals do is they do a lot of research about what's happened in the past. And so this is an example of the 1918 flu pandemic. And this was like the largest pandemic that we've seen in recent history. Where millions of people actually got this flu in whole cities. Philadelphia and St. Louis. And so if you look at the line on this chart, there's the dark line here, that's Philadelphia. And Philadelphia did not practice social distancing. And a lot of those practices that I just talked about, like quarantining and social distancing and sheltering in place, they did not do that. And as you can see, they had a huge spike in cases right here of the flu. Whereas St. Louis, they had, you know, gradual cases. That's the dawn of
So what is COVID-19? It is a illness caused by a virus that originated in Wuhan, China in December of 2019. It's unclear whether it was started from an animal, but it's kind of been hypothesized, but that's not for sure yet. In general, coronaviruses are common, so we've seen them before in human sicknesses. And a lot of time, they cause mild illness, like just the common cold. But sometimes they can cause severe illness, like SARS, which was another epidemic that we had a few years ago. This coronavirus is called COVID-19 and it is new or a novel virus. So that means that this type of coronavirus, we haven't experienced before. So that means that since we haven't experienced it before, no one has immunity or the ability to fight the virus and then we don't have any vaccines to prevent it. We do have some treatments and we're gonna go into that later, but we don't have any specific treatments for this virus, as well as the fact that we're learning about the virus every day. Just how it acts, how long it lasts, how contagious for, so that's kind of what COVID-19 is. You can do next slide.
Okay, and I'm Sarah Berry, like Casey said. And I know a lot of people have questions about how is the disease transmitted? Which means like how does the illness spread from person to person? So the, our most evidence right now says that the disease is spread through respiratory droplets, which means little particles of liquid that exit from your mouth or nose. So if someone is sick and these respiratory droplets spread, they can spread about six feet before dropping to the ground. So that's why we're saying people should stay about six feet apart, because that's gonna keep you safe from getting the viral particles. So then, you know, if someone is sick and they cough or they sneeze and these particles get into the air, then another person can pick them up through their mouth or nose or eyes. So that might be, you know, you're breathing in or if they land on a surface and you touch the surface and then touch your mouth or nose or eyes, then you're picking up those viral particles. So that's also why we're saying wash your hands and disinfect surfaces and try not to touch your face because your face is where your mouth, the nose and eyes are. So we're trying to keep those all clean. And then the other thing about this virus is that transmission can occur even when a person doesn't feel sick or like Erica said asymptomatic is what we call that. So you know, even people who aren't sick are still out there spreading the virus. So that's why we're saying please stay home. And that's really gonna help keep everyone safe and keep the virus isolated to just a few people. Next slide.
Okay, so this, these are the symptoms of COVID-19. So I think you guys have probably kind of heard about these, but the core symptoms are fever, cough, and shortness of breath. And I saw a question in here about why do people have to quarantine for 14 days? Symptoms can appear between two and 14 days after you've been exposed. So most likely after 14 days, if you haven't developed symptoms, then you haven't contracted the virus. However, that information is sort of still coming out about how long people can be contagious for. So but that's kind of an answer to that question. We can go into it maybe more in the, in the question and answer portion. But most commonly, if people develop a Other symptoms can include tiredness, muscle aches, sore throat, runny nose, diarrhea. And there's been sort of some new information about a lack of smell or taste in people who otherwise don't have any symptoms and that's kind of their main symptom. And when we talk about fever, it's 104 degrees Fahrenheit and above is considered a fever. Okay, next slide.
So just some statistics. People have been asking about the numbers. So this is on the left is numbers in California, so that's just the cases by age. And this data was up to date as of yesterday, but then if you look on the website today, the California Department of Public Health, you'll get new data. So it's just constantly changing. And then on the right, there's some data that we received from China because they had this outbreak before everyone else and so we're really getting a lot of our data from what they were able to do. And they are finding that about 80% of cases, they think are mild to moderate. So people are, you know, just able to manage them at home. They don't have to go into the hospital for those. But that means 20% of cases are more severe and so people are needing a lot more treatment. And you might have heard that people under age 18 or 19 are a lot less at risk. That is, it's looking like that is the case. It looks like the disease is much more mild in younger people, but that doesn't mean that all young people are getting the mild form. So some young people are still getting very sick. About 2.5% of the cases in China were severe and that means that they were needing to be hospitalized, needing interventions that were more than you could get just at your doctor's office. And 0.2% were critical, which means very, very deadly for, not necessarily deadly, but very sick and that people were needing like to be on ventilation and a lot of support from the hospitals.
And then we got a question beforehand about sort of who is at the highest risk and what that means. So the information that we have right now is older adults, meaning over 65 or are at higher risk for severe cases of the disease. And that's because as you get older, your immune system starts to work a little bit less efficiently and you also are more likely to have chronic medical conditions you've built up throughout your life. And then also individuals who have compromised immune systems, meaning their immune system isn't working as well. And this could be people of any age. And it could be people who have cancer or on cancer treatments, who are on certain medications or have immune deficiencies like HIV is wrong. And then also people with serious chronic medical conditions like heart disease, high blood pressure, diabetes, or lung disease. And then the graph on the right is kind of illustrating the point that Sarah was talking about before. And this is actually from the U. S. From February 12th to March 16th. And it shows cases of people who were hospitalized and then in the intensive care unit and then individuals who have died from coronavirus. And while it is much more likely to be seriously ill or die from coronavirus if you are older, like over 65 or have a previous health condition, we are seeing that younger people are being hospitalized, meaning they're having serious enough symptoms where they have to go to the hospital at some point during illness, during their sickness. So that's about the same rate as other groups, but the serious complications are arising mainly in people who are older and who have immunocompromised.
So I know one of the main things we all want to know is how do we protect those people that we love who are older or are at higher risk? And honestly, I don't have any new information for you. It's the same thing people have been saying that we need to do social distancing. We need to wash our hands. Hand washing is actually really important because it disrupts the virus and makes it not able to spread. So with an alcohol-based sanitizer or soap and water, you're able to actually get the virus off of your hands. And so that's really important. And then social distancing, I know it can feel really frustrating to like be sitting on the couch when people you love are out there and sick or we know people in the hospitals are dying from this. But honestly, that's the best way, staying at home is the best way that we can save lives right now. Is to keep more people at home and let the people who have to be out do their job without fear that other people are out spreading the disease. So I know for me personally, every time I start to feel really bored at home and I just wanna go out and like see a friend or go to the store or just leave my house, I try to picture my grandma and I try to think of like, okay, you know, it's worth it. I'm trying to keep her safe. I'm trying to keep my friends safe or working in the hospital. They don't have enough supplies for all of us to be getting sick. And so, you know, for them, it's, I can sit on my couch and do another puzzle and that'll be okay. So really just try to think about those other people when you're, when you're making your choices, whether or not to leave your house.
Sarah, do you wanna describe the graphic?
Sure, yeah. So the graph, the first part where it's all pink is showing that, right here, that if one person transmits it to three people, transmits it to another three people, then the spread of this virus is exponential. So it affects many people really quickly. And that is what they're finding, that they think the one person can infect two to three people. So these numbers are about right. But if a few people even on this graph just decided to stay home and stay out of the way, then you can see that the numbers in the middle there where it gets really high and scary are actually decreased by a whole lot. So if we can decrease the spread of this virus by, you know, just staying home, then we're gonna keep a bunch of people out of the hospitals.
Okay, and so then these are treatment options. So as we were saying before, the majority of people will get better at home and not have to go to the hospital for any amount of time. So if you, if there's a mild case, what we recommend is Tylenol for fever, rest, lots of sleep, lots of water, lots of tea. Honey has been shown to be really good for coughs and throat. You can gargle with warm saltwater and then eat a healthy diet. It's sort of all of the things you would be doing if you've had any other type of flu, except for you'd also want to isolate, especially if you're living with elders or someone who's immunocompromised and wanna be contacting your provider about any special precautions you should be taking. For the moderate cases, you'd be doing everything in the mild treatment and then there may be some extra medications prescribed, like an inhaler if there's some serious cough or breathing trouble and then maybe an antiviral medication. And in this case, there may be some amount of time that this individual would have to go to the hospital either for fluids or for oxygen. But for mild, moderate, most likely these people are being able to stay home and this is 80% of the cases. Or severe, that's all taken care of in the hospital. We're not really gonna go into it very, very in much detail, but it would be antiviral medications and this person would be getting fluids and oxygen. And in critical cases would be being on a ventilator so their lungs would get a chance to heal. And then just a little side note, 'cause I know this comes up sometimes, is that antibiotics treat bacteria and this is a virus, so antibiotics would not treat or prevent coronavirus.
Okay, I know if you're like me, when you start hearing about any illness, you start to feel like you have that illness. And so that can be really challenging. You know, I know I've had the sniffles for days now and I probably have nothing, right? So if you're really worried and you really think that you're sick, then you can call into your normal primary care office. So if you have a doctor or nurse practitioner or decisions assistant that you work with, call them and let them know what you're experiencing. So the, as Casey had said, the symptoms that we're looking at are fever, cough, and shortness of breath. And that means like it's really hard to breathe, maybe your chest hurts and you're having trouble getting a full deep breath. So if you're having those symptoms, you should call. Don't just go to your doctor's office, because if you show up and you have the virus, then you're potentially spreading it to other people. Or if you show up and you didn't have the virus, you're exposed to all those people in the doctor's office who probably do have it. So again, stay home and just make the phone call. What's happening for a lot of people is if they have a more mild form that, you know, you can just sit on your couch and eat chicken soup and you'll probably be okay, then they're advising people to just stay home. Don't even come in and get tested because we're trying to protect you from spreading the virus. We're trying to protect our healthcare workers because we're running out of supplies to protect them. And, you know, we're trying to save the tests for the people who are critically ill. So you might just be told to stay home. If they do want you to come into a test, they're gonna do a swab up your nose or in your mouth. And this graphic says that you might get test results within 24 hours. I've also heard of a different test that you're gonna get within four to five days. So you're probably gonna be told you have to stay home for at least that amount of time until you know whether or not you tested positive. And in the event that you can't get ahold of your doctor's office and your breathing is really, really fast, you can't get a good breath and your, maybe lips are turning blue or you're losing consciousness, that's a good time to go to the E. R. But again, you could call ahead and just let them know, you know, I'm coming in, but I've had these symptoms in my chest and I think it might be COVID. And then they can prepare with protective equipment for themselves so that you're not exposing them unknowingly.
Okay, this is just to end, or at least end our part on sort of a breath of fresh air that this will pass and we have to take it seriously and we have to follow the guidelines provided to us. But, you know, there's also a lot of room here for human compassion and invention in terms of vaccines or treatments. And that this will pass and we have to process. Thank you so much, UCSF, and thank you so much, old Sarah.
Thank you so much UCSF, and thank you so much, well, Sarah and Casey. We'll go ahead and start on wellness and mental health for students at home. I know this is a complicated time. And I'm Jessica, again, for those who didn't, were in the beginning. I am the Health and Wellness Director for OUSD Cancel, which is the student union. I basically have been pretty speaking with this. And you may have received a call from me yesterday, which was my birthday. But, so real quick, let's go ahead and start. Next slide, please, thank you. If you're having a mental and emotional health and helping a mental crisis, like health crisis, I'll just say you're having a break or, like a break or a mental breakdown, sorry. There's always people that want to hear you out. There's always people that want to talk to you. So go ahead, if you want to take a photo real quick, or anything, a screenshot. These are additional lines to contact any time of the day. There are lines, you can hit them up through phone, through chat online, through, through text. Next slide, please. Support and community for queer students and allies are our online community for you. There's a gender spectrum, there's a Trevor Project, the Q chat space. Just put these in mind, share these resources out to different students, with your friends, to everything. I know it's a complicated time again, and we want, we want you to feel included. We want you to feel that, you know, there's things that you could be able to share your emotions, which is very important for me, for all of us. Next slide, please. So, mental, emotional health. Check in with yourself, this is the best place. I know Helen, I saw your question about how can you stay positive or how can you stay yourself? You stay yourself, or how can you, what can you do with this time, to be honest? Try practicing mindfulness, journal, body scans, talk with supportive friends, step away from social media, the internet for a while, because let me tell you, the news is putting too much panic on people, that people are starting by things that they don't need. Express gratitude, take ownership of yourself. There's also a call with the superintendent and all OUSD staff, well, most of OUSD staff, that will be answering academic questions, like what's going to go down with your school? What's going to go down with your education? How is that going to affect your grades? How is that going to affect your steps for, for high school? Or how's that going to affect your high school graduation? Or how's that going to affect? Those are the questions that are going to be answered on Thursday. There's also stress reduction activities, such as doing puzzles, such as coloring, such as going out. But going out with taken precautions steps, such as if you wanted to walk your dog, stay six feet away. Go ahead to the slide, please. All right. Move your body and stay active. This is very important to me and very important to you. Let me tell you why. Because once you stay laying down in your bed for more than a day, let me tell you, it hurts a lot your body. Aim to work out at least thirty minutes per day. And let me tell you why, because I'm pretty sure in middle school and high school, they'll do PE. So this affects a lot your body when you don't do PE. I'm right now doing that two hundred day, two hundred squats a day, which is basically building up my glutes. And it's scientifically said that if you do a home workout, it affects your body more than doing it at the gym, because you get more motivated. There's YouTube videos, there's also, I know we all do TikToks at this thing. Learn all the dances if you want. Just stay your body active enough, but also don't forget to stay hydrated. Food access. There's twelve different sites in Oakland with schools that are giving now food. I myself have been going to those sites and been able to see how people are taking advantage of these places, because look, that pasta that they be giving you, you may think about it, but learn how to cook, because you're going to need that in college. You're going to need that when you're by yourself. We can show, okay, we're going to show these slides after. There's also female hygiene products are being given to these places. Girl, go get, go get those pads. Let me tell you, those pads are expensive at Walgreens and Walmart. So if they're giving them free, go ahead and take advantage of that. Next slide. So I myself and Lydia, who is with the OUSD Health and Wellness, been working on this campaign, and we got students all over Oakland, middle school and high school, to do a competition, who can do the best drawings? And students got to vote for them themselves. And drink water, I had it on my hydro flask. It's also, was one of the first designs. But the bottom three are designs from students, and there will be going on stickers later on in the year after this whole process goes. So, yeah. Healthcare access. We want all OUSD students to have access to healthcare. So La Clinica, Health, Healthy Oakland Teens, female products will be still open. Or reproductive sexual healthcare appointments, such as birth control, pregnancy testing, Prand B and STI testing treatments, are going to still be open. You can call one of the OUSD school-based health centers. Names and, I mean, numbers and address are still there. If you still want to take a screenshot about that, I recommend that. Female hygiene products will also be given out on these, in these places. There's also advisors' hotlines. Well, there might be a big time waiting time because of what's going on, but it's worth it instead of just going to the hospital and being exposed to the virus or any different type of illness. Don't be afraid to ask for help. This is a tough time, and I know there's a lot of different providers who are helping students, helping community members get things that they need, such as internet, such as student loan providers, such as formula companies. I know many people who are in need are calling the number in the back. Usually it says a number in the back, like somewhere around this area. And you can go ahead and call them, and they'll be probably helping you out on how to get those products, how to maintain, I'll just say like formula and all the different, all of those different types of things. So you'll be with all those different. Conclude that thought. Taking care of yourself equals taking care of others. Like Sarah said, think about your elder people who live around you, because that can affect them, and we don't want anything that can go wrong. So I recommend you to stay healthy, stay, stay clean, stay, wash your hands, please, please, wash your hands, like I'm begging. But yeah, thank you so much. So we're going to go ahead and start with Q and A.